Good evening, this is the Select Board of Monday, April 27, 2020. First order of business is to read the Governor's Executive Order on Remote Participation. This is Diane Mahon, Select Board Chair. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Dan Dunn?
Yes.
Joe Kuro?
Yes.
John Heard?
Yes.
Steve De Corsi?
Yes.
And now for our Town Hall staff, when I call your name, also please respond in the affirmative. Our Town Manager, Adam Chapdeline?
Yes.
Our Town Council, Douglas Heim?
Yes.
And Ashley Mahon from the Select Board Office is also watching remotely. Good evening, this open meeting of the Arlington Select Board is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's Executive Order of Mass. 122020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth, given the outbreak of the novel coronavirus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the virus and reduce the risk of COVID-19 illness, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's Order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which you can find posted with Agenda Materials for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature some public comments. Even if the members of the public do not provide comment, participants are advised that people may be listening who do not provide comments, and those persons are not required to identify themselves. For this meeting, the Select Board is convening by Zoom, as posted on the Town's website, identifying how the public may join in. Please note that this meeting is being recorded, that some attendees are participating by video conference. Accordingly, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and that take care not to share, screen-share your computer. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please also take care to adjust your screen or device name if you would like to speak. In order for us to recognize speakers appropriately and develop accurate minutes, it is helpful for participants to see your full first and last name when calling upon you, rather than a nickname. All of the materials for this meeting, except any executive session materials, are available on the NOVUS Agenda Dashboard, and we recommend the members in the public follow the Agenda, as posted on NOVUS unless the Chair notes otherwise. We're now turning to the first item on the Agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the Agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Chair will go down the line of members, Select Board members, inviting each by name to provide any comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and states your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in collulacy with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourself. This meeting will feature opportunities for public comment on certain Agenda items. After members have spokenized, the Chair will afford public comment opportunities as follows. I will ask first, members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once I have a list of all public commentators, I will call on those by name. Please keep in mind that all participants and members of the public must be recognized by the Chair before speaking. And finally, if it's okay with Attorney Heim, if we can continue with any votes of the Select Board takes, will be done by a roll call vote, with Attorney Heim calling the roll.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, first, we have on the Agenda an update on Town Meeting, as well as an update on the Annual Town Election. I will say that Attorney Leoni, who is our Town Moderator, sent out today on April 27, his declaration of recess and continuation of the April 27, 2020 meeting, for a period of up to 30 days, in light of the recent COVID-19 pandemic and steps that we need to take to make everybody who does come to Town Meeting when we call it, to make sure that all those involved are safe, but we can get the important business of Town Meeting conducted. We will later on in the Agenda take a necessary step to get the appropriate foreign articles to Town Meeting, as well as take action on the others. So I won't do that now. I will say that, as the Moderator stated at our last meeting, we did meet, we did discuss some dates in June that I know the moderators put out, has also discussed possibly down at the High School Field, but the moderator also sent out to Town Meeting members, and it's being posted through our Town Website, John Roman, and social media, and others, that there's currently a bill before the Legislature that would allow for some form of a virtual Town Meeting, and that our Town Moderator is forming a Moderator's Committee to see how such a virtual Town Meeting could work in Arlington. And he identified several issues. So while we have discussed having the meeting outside at the High School Field, there is also a discussion about virtual Town Meeting, and it could be one, either one, the both, or something else left to be determined. And with that, if I could call on our Town Manager, Mr. Chapdeline, to give us an update on our Annual Town Election on June 6, 2020.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do want to note, the Town Moderator is on the line. If you want to give him an opportunity to just, I think you covered it very comprehensively, but since he's here, if you wanted to add anything, if that's subject to you.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, I didn't see that. Is our Town Moderator available?
Yes, I'm here, I believe. I don't really have anything additional to add to that. I've been working with Attorney Heim and the Redevelopment Board on how we can handle the postponement of the articles that won't be coming forward, if that is the way this Board votes later on. That's it.
Okay, thank you. I only see a limited number of screens, I apologize, that's my fault. And now, our Town Manager, Mr. Chapdeline?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So pursuant to the Board's vote at its last meeting, I've been working as a liaison between the existing authorities that conduct Town Elections in Arlington, that being the Select Board's Office through the Board Administrator, as well as through the Clerk's Office and the Registervs. And I want to give a brief update on the discussions to date, some of the efforts we're planning to put forth, and our efforts or our plan to hear more from residents before we come back to the Board with a final plan at its next meeting. So the first and probably the most important item that we've been working on is putting together a postcard that can be mailed to every registered voter in Town that will have return postage paid on it, that will allow with a name and some other identifying information to be put onto that card, along with a signature, and then returned to the Clerk's Office and have that postcard serve as an application for an early voting by mail ballot. I know there was a lot of concern, concern shared by myself as well, that there was too many steps in this process to get people to be able to access these ballots. So we feel as though mailing out cards to every registered voter with, again, return postage on that card for them to be able to put on, put some information down and sign it and get it back, and thereby request the ballot, would really cut a number of steps out of this process. So that's the first one that we're working on. Town Council has drafted language for that card. We're working on putting, similar to what you might see on utility bills, information in several languages, not the entire card in several languages, but information on the card saying, "Important, please translate this card" in several languages on this postcard. So we're working on that. The Assistant Town Clerk has verified that our, the company that does printing for elections, can fulfill this request and do the mailing. So operationally, we should be able to get this done. We've also discussed a strategy for locating drop boxes across Town for ballot return. These would have to be very safe, secure drop boxes. Again, we want to make sure that people don't have to apply a stamp if they don't want to, to return their ballots. We'll be looking at a strategy of dispersing them across Town and certainly finding some way to have ballot drop, safe ballot drop at Town Hall available. So we're working on that strategy as well. We're also talking, and this primarily is through conversations with the Board Administrator, Marie Repilka, on our strategy for polling locations. We do know that there's three polling locations that will need to be moved, Precinct 7, 9, and 20. I know the Board Administrator is close on finalizing new locations, so we should have news on that very soon for the Board to act upon and then trigger postcard notification of those polling place location changes. The other thing that we're working on is determining whether or not we have enough poll workers who feel comfortable to work the polls that day. So that's an ongoing process right now. Obviously, there's a good number of our poll workers who would be identified as members of the vulnerable population to the coronavirus. So in the upcoming days, we'll be getting a clearer picture of just how much staff we have to be able to man the polls, and exactly how that will impact our strategy on June 6. We're also committing to doing more outreach and advertising than we normally would in Town in terms of signage and notification to folks about the election on June 6. Additional sandwich boards in Town, I think suggestions have been made at grocery stores or other essential stores where people might be visiting. We could, we'll be looking into putting sandwich boards there, as well as signage in places where we might not normally put signage. And then finally, this Wednesday, sort of a cooperative between the League of Women Voters, Envision Arlington, the Election Modernization Committee, and also the Town Departments, including myself, that are putting the work in to try to make this, make this election work, given the circumstances. We're going to do a listening session via Zoom on Wednesday, April 29, 7:00 PM, that will give an opportunity for me to very quickly, hopefully as I'm doing right now, present the outlines of this plan, maybe with a little added information by that point, but then hear suggestions, questions, concerns from residents in Town about the work that we're doing to try to make this election run as smoothly as possible, again, given the circumstances. So that's where we stand today. I want to thank specifically Doug, Town Council, who's been tremendous in advising what we can and can't do legally, as well as liaising with the State Secretary of State's Office and the Office of Campaign and Political Finance to be very certain of what we can and cannot do in terms of how we manage this election. And I also want to thank all the other folks from the Modernization Committee, Envision Arlington, the League of Women Voters, and the Clerk's Office, who are really doing all they can, as well, excuse me, and the Board's Office as well, doing all they can to try to make this, make this happen on June 6. So with that, if the Board has any questions, if you have to answer them.
Okay, I don't know if you can hear me, but I kind of lost you there for a second. Do, this doesn't necessarily need a vote. I don't know if any of my colleagues on the Board have anything additional that'd like to add. Mr. Dunn?
Yeah, so the progress on the election sounds good. I think that that all sounds, I think that sounds all really positive, because I really, it feels to me like anybody who wants to vote will be able to with a relative minimum of consternation, and certainly without risk to themselves in this way. So that sounds like a huge, like, I'm very, very pleased to hear about all those steps. I am curious about Town Meeting. So I guess I'd heard, like, talk about, like, the football field. Not the rink or anything, not an indoor location, nothing like that? I was just curious, how that thinking is going.
Is Mr. Mahon, or?
Yeah, let me bring him back in. I'm sorry, I just moved him back out of the talking category. All right, he's back.
Attorney Leoni, did you hear the question from Mr. Dunn?
Yes, I heard the question. It's basically very preliminary thought process right now. It's going to be based upon a couple things. One has the Governor lifted the 10-person restriction, and at that point in time, are we still under a six-foot-wide zone of safety around us? And the Berkshires, their Board of Health has recommended a 10-foot squares that people would be in. And I thought about the football field for a couple reasons. One, it's outside, lots of fresh air, lots of moving air. It's already wired for sound, electricity, and ACMI has the press booth already wired up for TV. So it's hitting a few of our high points as far as public participation and safety. One of the biggest concerns I have is actually the Town Staff, who is going to check people in and hand out the clickers, and then getting those back. So there's a lot of moving parts at this point, but I would feel better doing it outside than doing it anywhere inside at this point in time, given what we know.
Yeah, all of that, I definitely understand all your reasoning and the good, the good parts that you described there. I just worry about the weather.
Well, yes, we'd have to have it two days, one with a rain date. Speaking with Attorney Heim and Al Tosti, we kind of are thinking, like, June, that Wednesday around June 15, and if it rains, we could do it the following Monday, the 24th. That would still get us in within the 10 days before the end of the year, so our budgets could be finalized and we'd be able to go forward into the next fiscal year. So that's where my date theories are coming from.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, Mr. Kuro?
Thank you very much. And, you know, I also, I'm very encouraged, Mr. Manager, by everything that you've reported and the progress on the making this, this election accessible and widely advertised. I also had some questions for the Moderator on Town Meeting. One of the things the Chair said was that you're looking at the possibility, are there's pending legislation around virtualization of Town Meeting? And I realize that it would be a logistical nightmare to have 252 people plus staff, you know, trying to zoom in for Town Meeting. But is, is there a potential opening or discussion amongst moderators of possibly having satellite locations to break up Town Meeting and having, you know, deputized individuals on the sites to manage the speakers? So potentially, if you had four sites of 50 people each, you could maintain social distancing and with deputies at each, at each site in communication with you to regulate the flow of speakers through a virtual setting?
What you're describing often happens at an open Town Meeting, where they get 500,000 folks showing up. We've never done that, because obviously we have the nice big Town Hall, and we haven't had to have satellite meeting halls. I don't think, although it's a good suggestion, I'm not sure it would solve our problem of social distancing. And it wouldn't make the communication issue any easier, because one of our hallmarks is we all sit down in the same area and hash things out. What we're envisioning is not a lot of hashing things out this time. It's going to be quick, come on in, here's the budget, you all had them for a couple weeks, should have submitted any questions already, let's vote them and go home before we get sick. Now, whether we do that in one big spot, or we do it out in several satellites, it would be the same result, and I think logistically it would be a lot saner to do it in one big open spot. And in mid-June, it stays light till, I think I looked it up, it was like 8:30, 9 o'clock at night anyways. So everyone would be in and out of there, and it'd still be light up. You wouldn't have to worry about getting dark.
Good, thank you very much.
As far as the Zoom Town Meeting, that to me just sounds unfathomable with the current technology.
No, agreed, agreed.
Thank you, Mr.? Um, I'm sorry.
You say my name, sorry?
I'm sorry, Mr. Heard, yeah.
Yeah. It flipped out. Um, no, I'm just, again, I'm really encouraged by the progress that we're making to make this accessible to all residents. One question, you know, that just went over my head to the Town Manager through the Chair. Did you mention that we're sending this postcard to all registered voters in Town?
Yes, that would be the plan, yes.
And do we, so what is the plan? Obviously, we're not going to get all registered. It'd be nice if we had full participation, but just to confirm, we have the ability to supply ballots if, in the event, all registered voters asked for an absentee ballot? Or a mechanism to get our hands on those?
So right now, that is what the Assistant Town Clerk has told me, that we have, you know, a good amount on hand and should have access to more. I'll confirm that, obviously, but my understanding is yes.
And we can be realistic as to what the expectation is. There just be, you know, in the event that we do have large participation, we want to make sure that everyone that normally votes and everyone that wants to vote has the ability to do so. So I just want to make sure that we have a mechanism in place to handle that. As far as locations, you know, I think, I trust that our staff will make it safe for all the voters that are going to the actual polling locations. I think something important to note is flow. I think every location should have one entrance and one exit, sort of a line in and line out, that will make sure that the people aren't passing in and out. I think that's just a consideration to make. In the past couple weeks, I've talked to a number of people about the election, and they say the old adage is, the only bad idea is the one that you don't share, right? So is it feasible to have, for people that don't get absentee ballots, but don't want to go to a fiscal location, to have some sort of drive-by location, whereas people would queue in their cars and could drive up to the, to the location?
Well, actually, I'll let the Town Manager also speak to that, but we were just speaking about this. I don't even know what day it is, every day is like a whole year. But we were discussing having a possible one or two Saturdays where people could come to the Town Hall. And Mr. Chapdeline, would you like to speak to that in terms of, you know, what the ballot box might be in the process that we're just beginning to discuss?
Yeah, so that gets to that idea of drop boxes that was mentioned of having there be places where people could easily and accessibly drop their ballots. I do think, and we can dig into this a little more with Town Council, but I don't think we could stand up a drive-through polling place where people would be able to come in, give their name, get a ballot, and vote. I think we could have a drive-through ballot drop-off place where people who have requested early voting ballots could fill them out and then drop them off somewhere. But, I mean, Town Council, please, with the Chair's permission, please jump in. I don't, I don't think we can open polling locations other than on Election Day.
Attorney Heim?
That's correct. So the Board will need to set its polling locations if it's going to deviate from our normal polling locations. That'll actually have to be an Agenda item at some point in time. We'd need to outline where exactly folks can, can basically participate in that concept. There's nothing that I'm aware of that sort of allows us to have a general polling location for a sort of drive-through. And I guess there would also be some issues with respect to equity and access. If we were going to do it, I think we'd want to do it in every precinct. So there are some complications we'd have to deal with. I mean, I think the good news is, is that for anybody who wants to get one of these mail-in ballots or absentee ballots, I think that the drop boxes, we definitely have a lot of special. If I may, Madam Chair, just add one thing to something that Mr. Heard said previously. Thank you. I just want to take a moment while we've got folks watching to let people know something that I think is on the Town Clerk's website, but is important to understand, is that with respect to having enough ballots, if for whatever reason we ran out of mail-in ballots, the law basically says that absentee ballots work the same way. So it actually doesn't matter whether you receive a ballot marked absentee ballot or a ballot marked early voting mail-in ballot, as long as they've got the same candidates and information on them, which they all will, they function the exact same way. So if we ran out of one type of ballot, it's okay for the purposes of this election only to interchange.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Mr. Heard?
Yeah, no, that's all good. And I think we're taking a lot of steps to make this election as accessible as possible for people in light of the circumstances. And, you know, I just want to make sure we leave no stone unturned, so. Thank you for the responses.
Thank you. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, you know, I share the other Board members' comments. I think these are good steps. There's still several things that need to be done. I think we're on a good track. And I think the postcard, I did hear from a couple voters last week who were concerned about an inability to print out the early ballot or the absentee ballot application. So the postcard is going to address that issue. And just wondering too, on the, just getting information out, I want to commend the Clerk's Office for, one of the challenges that they've had, and I've seen it from my own family here, is that there are some absentee voters who were at a different address when they sent in their absentee ballot application, namely, students at school. So just bear in mind, if you sent in an application already and it was a different address than you're at now, clarify that with the Clerk's Office, because you don't want it going out of state or somewhere else if you're around here. And the other thing I wanted to say, just in terms of people, and I think we should be encouraging as many people as possible to vote by mail, but just if we can get out the information that this is a receipt statute for the election, it's not a postmark statute. So the ballots have to be returned by Election Day, and if postmarked on, on Election Day, won't, won't cut it. So if we, I know we're working with the Clerk's Office and we're going to have a listening session, but to the extent that we can address some of those issues as well, that would be great.
Excellent. I will say that every couple of minutes, my sound goes out for 10 to 20 seconds, but I can pretty much fill in what I'm not hearing, and I haven't heard any of you say that you can't hear me, so I'm just going to continue on. But if there's an awkward pause, you can just wave to me and I'll know it's, I need to move on there. I don't want to delay the meeting. Everything's been said, so I'm not going to repeat that. I just want to do one last round with our Town Moderator, Attorney Leoni. Is there anything else you needed to clarify, add, or anything else?
Not really. We're going to make the determination if it's safe and sound to go forward, and if we do, we will be ready with our truncated Town Meeting with three or four or five items, a big consent agenda, without a lot of extraneous things at all.
Okay, thank you. Just heard from Attorney Heim, and before I go on to the consent agenda, I did not write it down. If the Town Manager, Mr. Chapdeline, could tell me again what the virtual Town Forum is, I don't want to misstate the date or anything. I promise I'll write it down.
29th, two days from now, Wednesday, April 29, 7:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. And we don't vote on that. So next, we have our consent agenda. Minutes of the meeting, April 13, 2020. Reappointments, Arlington Historic, Arlington Historic District Commission's at-large member, Charles Barry, term to expire 6/30/23. Request contractor drain layer license, AT Paving LLC, out of Revere, Mass. And a request contractor drain layer license, GW Gately Inc., out of Woben, Mass. First, is there a motion from any of my colleagues on consent agenda?
Move approval subject to our conditions of set forth.
Second?
Second by Mr. Dunn. Any comments, questions, minutes, reappointments? If not, not seeing any on a motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Heard?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. Unanimous vote, 5-0. We now go to appointments. Arlington Historic District Commission, the Jason Gray District. We have Dr. Allison Johnson, term to expire 6/30/23. Is Dr. Johnson with us?
She's to be, let me, um... Okay, she, uh... All right, should be able to talk.
Yes, I am here.
Okay.
Hi, if you could, even though we're doing this virtually, just name an address for the record and sort of, we have your curriculum vitae resume before us, but sort of an introduction, not just to the Select Board, but everybody watching or listening at home.
All right, my name is Allison Frank Johnson. I live at 24 Jason Street, right here in Arlington Center, just a few steps from Town Hall. I've lived in Arlington since 2005. I have three children in the public school system, a senior at the high school, a freshman at the high school, and a first grader at Bishop. I am a historian by training and by profession. I teach history at Harvard University, and I'm also Chair of the German Department. I've done various volunteer work on historic properties in my youth. I haven't done anything like that recently, but it's part of my past and something I'm interested in. I've done various volunteer work on historic properties in my youth. I haven't done anything like that recently, but it's part of my past and something I'm interested in. And um, I'm not sure what else it would be useful for me to say about myself at this point. Perhaps you could give me some tips.
Uh, well, you certainly have a great deal of, of experience. First, what I'll do is take a motion from one of my colleagues on the appointment of Dr. Johnson by Mr. Dunn.
Uh, move approval. Um, thank you for volunteering. Your resume is very impressive, and I think uh, you'll be great for the committee, and I really appreciate uh, the volunteerism to, to help that committee move forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dunn.
Seconded by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd?
Okay.
Okay, um, uh, any further questions or comments by enemy, my colleagues? Um, I, I do want to say to Dr. Johnson, Allison, this is my first appointment of someone through a, a virtual select board. But thank you for being the, the guinea purse, guinea pig. Um, I can't wait till I can meet you uh, in person when it's safe. Um, and we get to a new normal uh, of the rest of us. And um, I really do like the fact that you're going to be a member at large, um, because I think that uh, allows you to serve in many capacities. And then thank you for volunteering, for doing this.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman, and I do look forward to meeting all of the members of the select board in due course.
Thank you. So uh, a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Any further questions or comments? If not, Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kiro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. That's unanimous, 5-0. Next agenda item eight, we have another appointment. Arlington Historic District Commission's, the Broadway District. We have Beth Malachek, term to expire also 6/30/2023. Um, is um, Ms. Malachek with us, Beth?
Yes, I am, Madam Chair. Good evening. Good evening, board members, Mr. Chaplaine and Mr. Heim.
Good evening. Um, I, again, the same is with um, Dr. Johnson, Allison, um, if you could just uh, name an address for the record and sort of give everybody sort of brief 101 on, again, your appointment to the historic district commissions.
Okay, Beth Malachek, 20 Russell Street. I'm trained uh, as in, I'm trained as a teacher of Russian language to non-native speakers of Russian, having achieved a professional level of Russian. Um, after graduate study, I've lived abroad extensively, worked abroad extensively, administering uh, foreign exchange programs on a university level. Um, I, I think as a result of that, I acquired a fine appreciation for um, for history and for living in cities that were able to uh, preserve architecture from many eras and came to an understanding of the importance of that to the communities. So.
Thank you. Um, first, is there a motion by one of my colleagues? By
Move approval.
Mr. Kiro, is there a second?
Second.
It's the De Corsi. I apologize. That's just my audio doing this. So I don't want anyone to think anything um, untoward. Um, um, Beth, I have seen you a lo- around town a lot, attending many meetings, CDBG subcommittee meetings, as well as um, the contact that we can have now, which is mostly through email. Um, I'm really excited that you get involved in the town this way. I know you're going to bring a lot of your expertise um, that I've seen a little bit of in, in other venues. So I'm, I'm really thrilled once again that you're going to be volunteering for uh, the town of Arlington. Um, um, and a motion, uh, any further questions or comments? If not, and a motion by Mr. Kiro, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Hurd? Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kiro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. That's 5-0. We now go to licenses and permits. Um, leave Attorney Hurd, uh, this is for approval. Food vendor license, Anthony's Eastside Deli, uh, 159 Massachusetts Avenue, South Beach, Sinai. Attorney Hurd, I mean, Hurd.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I have a conflict on this one, so I'm going to recuse myself. The current owner of the deli is my father-in-law, so I'm going to step out of the meeting while this one's heard.
Okay, and I would just ask Ms. Mar to have that so noted in the minutes that um, prior to any discussion or motion, uh, Mr. Hurd is no longer with us at the meeting. Uh, so um, do we have Mr. Sinai here or, yep?
Yes, I'm here.
Hi, if you could just say your name correctly for the record, and I apologize for not saying it right, and just a little bit about um, coming into a great business in East Arlington, Anthony's E- Eastside Deli.
Yes, my name is Sarvi Tzaini, and I'm coming in to buy Anthony's Eastside Deli. I've owned some previous businesses in Belmont, um, called Kishish, and I've had a business in um, Lexington called Kushfood in the past.
Excellent. Um, and we do have your uh, maintenance plan here, reports from our different um, town departments, as well as your prior experience elsewhere. Um, first, is there a motion by one of my three colleagues, Mr. Dunn?
Uh, move approval, subject to all conditions from departments.
Is there a second by Mr. Kiro? Um, any further questions and comments besides, uh, welcome to Arlington and look forward to um, once again, uh, in the time of this COVID-19 crisis, the uh, planning department, our economic uh, developer, um, really doing a lot of work to talk about all of our businesses, not just our restaurants. So um, I hope the community, I know the community you're coming into will be very welcoming, and we're doing everything we can to keep everybody safe, but also keep our small businesses um, thriving somehow. So if not on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Kiro, uh, Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Kiro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. That's 4-0 with Mr. Hurd. Um,
Madam Chair, if I, I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I add something quickly?
Certainly, Attorney Heim.
I, I apologize for taking a moment to do this. I just want to make sure that everybody understands we're trying to navigate a new world in virtual meetings. When someone has a conflict of interest and they recuse themselves, they ordinarily physically leave the room. The two key provisions are that they can't be heard and they can't be seen. So while people might see that Mr. Hurd is technically an attendee of the meeting, the instruction was for him to mute himself and to shut off his camera. I just wanted to make that clear, that we follow the correct protocol. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So I'm assuming Mr. Hurd will know some way to get back on the agenda. We now go to agenda item 10 for approval, proposal for community block grant subcommittee funding. Um, this is something that came um, up before the subcommittee that uh, Mr. Dunn and I and uh, se- several staff, town staff and the three uh, residents um, met. Um, and Joanne Preston had provided a suggestion, I think we received the day of the meeting, um, and upon further discussion, uh, initially it was going to be under correspondence received, but then as we had more discussion, my colleague, Mr. Dunn with uh, Mr. Chaplaine, uh, it appeared that um, there had already been some work done on this so that we could uh, instead of just receiving it, we could actually um, get it moving into the process. Mr. Dunn, I'm probably not saying that everything correctly the way I should.
Uh, no, I, I think that's fair. Uh, so um, so we, we got this unexpected money through the CARES Act, and um, we, and the planning department had made a recommendation on how to allocate it, which will, the CDBG Subcommittee had considered. And then Ms. Preston brought up the problem with the safety on Chestnut Street at the inter- near uh, St. Agnes Church. And she'd suggested that the, the money be used for that. And uh, I think her suggestion that that intersection needs work was accurate and timely and, and, and helpful. But I, I think that the, but we, we agree, but Diane, you and I agreed, and I think so did uh, Town Manager Adam Chaplaine, who was there. Is it really the right, the right people to take a look at this, or TAC? Because the tech, the Transportation Advisory Committee is really well-equipped to um, make recommendations to us about problematic intersections uh, and, and roadways related to safety. And uh, as I recall the conversation, there was some concern about whether or not TAC was uh, well-suited to handle traffic calming and traffic safety, uh, which, and they absolutely are, you know, they've got many years of uh, track record of, of, of that kind of work, uh, and it's not just regulatory work they do. And uh, so I, I, I think that what we should do is we should um, uh, uh, a move that we refer the Chestnut Street intersection to TAC for consideration and to report back to us. And also that we send it with a note, you know, recognizing that there was a fatality there uh, earlier this year, or was it late last, this winter? And um, that therefore it really should be treated with the, you know, the appropriate uh, speed to, to, to make, to see if we can address any problems with the urgency that's uh, appropriate.
Okay, first, if I could get a second, and then I think I see Joanne Preston opposite.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hurd. If I could now call on um, Ms. Preston, Joanne Preston?
Yes, I, I have an update on this, and I think it's an important one, and I hope you'll seriously consider it. Um, I have been working on this with the police chief and the traffic uh, division of the police force since uh, for the last two months. Um, one thing we thought about was traffic calming, and when I saw there might be some funds available, I wrote this proposal. However, the proposal really needs to be reworked before it gets sent somewhere. And let me just uh, explain why. Um, I had a 45-minute discussion with Mr. Wayne Chouinard, I hope I got it right, uh, who's head of engineering, uh, last Friday morning. And we came to the conclusion that the pedestrian traffic patterns need to be studied and included in the proposal. Um, I also suggested that there be some community, more extensive community input. This, however, cannot take place until the threat of the coronavirus is over because nobody's on the street and not very many people are driving cars. And so it's hard to do a pedestrian study until people are out and about. Um, we also discussed, he has a preliminary engineering uh, pedestrian safety concept. Um, and we just talked about it. I talked about some of my concerns and the problem with the signalized intersection at Mystic Street and Chestnut Street, which take three single lights to cross, and cars don't often stop because they see it's a ramp. So if they take out the crosswalk at Chestnut Terrace, um, people would have difficulty walking down the street and using the other option. Um, so what I suggest is, why don't we wait until we look at the pedestrian patterns and rework this proposal, which I wrote late at night, and then submit it to the appropriate place. I think it would save a lot of time um, because they will ask that same question. And also, this really has, I discussed with the police chief, nothing that can be done at this time because people aren't using the crosswalk because they're not walking outside their buildings much. And there's, the traffic is almost null there. So um, the only reason I wrote this proposal is because I just thought they were, through this stimulus uh, package, some extra money in which maybe we could use a consultant. It was probably a big mistake, uh, or apparently it was a big mistake. So there's nothing to be studied until there's traffic patterns, and the head of engineering felt that he could take a staff person to do this. So I would, and also I think we ought to have a little more community level input for the people who actually live there and use this. I learned a lot by talking to them. And I'm sure the traffic, I mean, the engineering division will too. So my suggestion is, let them do, the engineering people look at pedestrian patterns there. And secondly, consult more with the community, rewrite the proposal, and the, give it to whomever you would like to give it to. And that can't be done immediately, but there's no danger immediately because there's virtually no traffic.
Thank you, thank you. And, and what I would say to that, and I, I would call on our town manager, is um, there were concerns expressed at the CDB, the CDBG um, subcommittee meeting that, you know, this is an important issue, we really shouldn't delay it. And, and there definitely does need to be a process. We do have um, a, a couple of options that have already been drawn up, I believe by our town engineering department. Uh, Mr. Slickman sent an email, I think, I read it today. He said it's Sunday afternoon, um, expressing that um, option two, but some was of, um, my, what I think needs to happen now is we need the uh, professional volunteers who serve on our Transportation Advisory Committee, our TAC, to take what's come out of the town from our engineering department, which are our two options, and apply their expertise. Um, but Mr. Chaplaine, am I, am I sort of encapsulating the back and forth text email you and I had?
Absolutely. I, I think the Transportation Advisory Committee uh, really will provide the best of all worlds in this. They'll take, I mean, Wayne Chouinard sits in the Transportation Advisory Committee, so they'll take him and his expertise. They'll have the resident expertise. They'll bring in the police traffic division and their expertise, the senior transportation planner and his expertise, as well as having it be a public, open meeting and being able to invite those that live near that area and use that area. So I think Ms. Preston's right, uh, that gathering data right now might not be um, effective, given, given the circumstances that we are dealing with. But I don't see myself there being any harm in referring it to TAC, so they could scope out the work that should be done in terms of uh, data gathering and um, sort of testing what's on the ground. And then when they see the time is fit to start doing that data gathering, I think they can, can en- enable that and move as quickly as possible. So I, I still believe that a referral to TAC would be the appropriate measure here.
Agreed. Um, so um, first off, state a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Dunn, any further comment?
Yeah, just that I definitely agree with um, the things with Ms. Preston and the things that she thinks are important, including community input and uh, pedestrian study and survey, and I just think the TAC is absolutely the right group for that. And uh, I think, you know, if you're, if you're into that kind of thing, reading the TAC's website can actually be really interesting. You'll read more about traffic speeds and calming and, you know, counting methods and notes from community meetings. They do a lot of really good work, in particular the stuff around Downing Square, which is a really challenging intersection. I learned so much from their process on that, and I, I, I have a lot of faith in, in the work that they do.
And I also have a second by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd, any further comments?
No, I was just going to follow so much what the town manager said, you know, from being on TAC, that Wayne Chinua is on the committee's active in the participation of all the discussions. So that's the appropriate venue for it to put it on their agenda. And then, you know, there's a lot of really amazing traffic professionals who volunteer on the TAC. So, you know, we're so fortunate to have those people as a resource. So um, you know, I think that they're, the community to handle this and to get them going as soon as possible, and they will use their discretion to determine when the best time to start the traffic council be.
Uh, Mr. Kiro?
I have no further comment. I, I support the motion. Thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
No comment.
Okay, and everything's been said before me, and I've certainly had my say. So um, any further questions and comments? If not, and a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd. Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
This is De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kiro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. That 5-0, unanimous vote. We now go to, for approval, acceptance of request from the Marion D. H. Sylvester Trust for the Mount Pleasant Cemetery. We have um, some correspondence from the Officer of the Treasure and Collector of Taxes, Phyllis, Phyllis Marshall. I'm not sure if she is with us?
She is, yep.
Um, Ms. Marshall, if you could explain this to the board and to everyone um, on the meeting?
I will, thank you. Um, the Mount Pleasant Cemetery is um, one of the recipients of a bequest from the Trust of Marion Sylvester. And um, although the trust is important to us, it's to And although the trust is important to us, it's to preserve the portion of the cemetery known as the Paul Francesco Dodge Lot. And there's a, this is a critical request. The amount of the bequest is about $55,000 for maintenance of that area. And because the last decedent passed without family members, the trust has requested a new trust to disperse the funds, and we have been asked to sign off on that. Our share is about 1% of the estate.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Marshall. First, is there a motion by?
I move approval.
Mr. Kuro, and seconded by Mr. Dunn. Mr. Kuro, any questions, comments?
Yeah, I actually, I guess the proper motion is move acceptance, correct? Yeah. But I have no further, further comments other than, you know, to say that, you know, I think we're very grateful to the, the individuals who left this to the town.
Seconded also by Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dunn, any questions or comments?
I don't, but I did see that, noticed that Mr. Heim had his hand up.
Oh, I'm sorry, Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair, thank you, Mr. Dunn. I just want to clarify one thing. As a part of this acceptance, we are essentially taking a vote to support the appointment of Deborah Lincoln as the new trustee. We represent only 1% of this trust. The law essentially requires that there be a unanimous appointment of the, basically, new trustee who's really won't have much to do with the town. It's, 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 once the gift is made, it's primarily going to be administering the rest of the trust. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Kuro.
Do I need to amend my motion through you to the town council? Do I need to amend my motion?
Yeah, so it's a move approval for the receipt of the funds as well as to appoint?
Support the appointment of?
Of Deborah Lincoln.
Deborah Lincoln as trustee.
And that's still seconded by Mr. Dunn, because I don't see. Mr. Hurd?
Just to clarify through the chair to the town council. So this, once this new trust is getting established, it's getting dispersed, this bequest is getting dispersed to the town free of trust, correct? It's not going to remain in trust?
Pretty much, yes.
Like the prince? Cash has a little more value? Okay, just wanted to make sure.
Okay, Mr. De Corsi?
No comment.
Okay, on Mr. Kuro's amended motion to move approval to receive these funds as well as the appointment, seconded by Mr. Dunn, any further questions or comments? If not, roll call, Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Yes. Did you hear, yes? Okay, that's a unanimous vote, five oh. Next, we have acceptance of gift for Arlington Fire and Arlington Police Department mail card, gift cards from an anonymous donor. Attorney Heim?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The short version is, the Arlington Fire Department and Arlington Police Department received anonymous donation of approximately $7,550 worth of gift cards to local Arlington restaurants. They contacted the State Ethics Commission about this. They have an advisory, anybody who wants to read it, 19-1, which talks about gifts to public agencies. Because the donations are anonymous and they're to an agency, actually, the anonymous part doesn't matter that much, but because they're anonymous and they're to a public agency, they have to be approved by the select board. And my recommended sort of motion to clearly define the parameters of the gift to our first responders from this anonymous source, which hopefully will also benefit our restaurant, is to request the select board to vote to accept this donation to Arlington Police Department and other first responders, and to direct those departments to utilize these gift cards evenly among on-duty staff for use in buying meals for sale. Thank you.
Thank you. First is, there are motion to?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Kuro to acceptance of this gift. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. De Corsi. Mr. Kuro, you made the motion, any further questions or comments?
Well, just thank, thank you to the anonymous donor. It's very considerate, and I think we all know how hard our first responders are working right now. Thank you, Mr. Heim, for passing it through the Ethics Commission to, you know, make sure that we're, we've crossed all the Ts and dotted all the Is to allow this to go forward.
Thank you, and I have a second by Mr. De Corsi. Mr. De Corsi?
Yeah, I also want to thank the anonymous donor and continue to recognize the great work of our first responders in town.
Mr. Dunn?
It's a gift to both sides, and it's most welcome, and thank you very much.
Mr. Hurd?
Again, thank the donor. It's amazing, time and time again, to see how generous people in this town are. And then just thank the first responders who are doing so much for our community right now. It's well deserved, and, you know, anyone that uses Stop &amp; Shop knows you often see the fire truck out there, so that will keep them out of the supermarket as well. So, thank you.
Okay, on the motion by Mr. Kuro, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, roll call, Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. Unanimous vote, and item twelve is closed. We now go to agenda item thirteen, for approval, removal of trees on front green at Arlington High School. Our town manager, Mr. Chaplaine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So the board has a letter before it from the Chair of the High School Building Committee, Jeff Thielman, requesting the board's authorization to remove a number of trees in front of the high school. There was a hearing, held a tree hearing, held back in February. There were three letters received in lead up to that hearing, objecting to the removal of the trees. At that hearing, there was a very detailed, comprehensive presentation given by the landscape architect working on this project in regards to the trees planning to be removed, as well as the, at least to some degree, the planting plan for the remainder of the site. So what we're asking for is the board's permission to remove these trees. And, but we do have with us tonight Daniel Norman, again, from the projects landscape architect firm, to provide a little more detailed answer to any questions the board might have about this, about this project.
Mr. Norman, name and firm for the record?
Sure, my name is Daniel Norman. The firm is Crosby, Slessinger, Small Ridge.
And if there's anything else that you wanted to add to what the town manager said? Or if any of my colleagues have questions for you, Mr. Norman?
I'm not sure if there's much more I can add, other than some detail if that's of interest of the board. But I'm here certainly to answer any question.
If I may, what might be interesting, Daniel, is if you can talk a little bit about the replanting plan and, you know, how we are focusing and trying to make up for the caliper loss for these removals?
That's right, okay, sure. So as part of the early bid package, to get the new high school going, the front green is, is where a number of trees will be removed. Approximately 45 healthy trees in total in that area, as well as 15 additional trees, both behind the CVS property to the east and the Stop &amp; Shop property to the west. We are still in the construction document phase of the project, 60% of the way through. And currently, we are showing an addition of 200 new trees to be planted at the Arlington High School, the majority of which will be replacing the trees that are removed in the front lawn area. But there are still a number of trees that will be planted throughout the property.
Okay, thank you. I just want to, before, what I want to do is, since this is a public hearing, come up with a list of people who wish to speak on this. I do want to state that our tree warden held a public hearing on February 26th of this year, and there were no objections registered or noted at the time. But subsequent to that, I know the tree warden and others have received written correspondence from at least three individuals. And I just want to state to people, not only with this agenda item, it seems as though there's some miscommunication, and I apologize, I want to clear that out, that, you know, if you send in a piece of correspondence, you know, to a tree hearing, to CDBG Subcommittee, to Committee on the School Side, that isn't automatically sent to the Select Board's office. The only way that happens, that it comes to our attention, is that you also email us or regular mail us, or, we don't receive everything, so everything isn't always listed as correspondence received, as well as we have to close the agenda and give the proper 48-hour notice. So I noticed, I think it's because of the current times, myself and my colleagues, and if it's just me, I try to do the proper channels, which is to go through the Select Board and forward to them, so I don't contact my colleagues directly. But once the agenda closes Wednesday afternoon, that's all the official documentation the board has received, as well as any members of the public. And I'm not saying you can't send an email at the last minute or anything like that, but I know there have been some that misunderstood that as a slight or ignoring information. It's just that we have to follow the open meeting law, have to follow the process. So please, whenever you get anything into us, if you wanted to appear, send that in whatever form you feel comfortable with to the Select Board's office. So, Mr. Chaplaine, it is a tree hearing. Has anyone indicated they would like to speak at this hearing?
Yes, Susan Stamps, has her hand raised?
Anyone else?
No, not right now.
Okay, Ms. Stamps, name and address for the record, or name and group affiliation for the record?
Hi, my name is Susan Stamps, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, everybody, great to see you. 39 Grafton Street, and a member of the Tree Committee. And I'm not speaking for the Tree Committee, but I'm sure, I'm sure my fellow members would agree with the, I just wanted to remind everyone and the, of the, the people who will be running the project of cutting down the trees, that, can you hear me?
Yes.
The town did adopt a policy, which a lot of projects have been good at following, some not that good. But the tree warden needs to be consulted throughout this project. And I, so I would appreciate that the tree planting team tree warden regarding the species to be planted and various other characteristics of the trees and the planting and protecting other trees, also that are on the site from any damage. So that was number one. And number two, also to remind everyone that the town also adopted a policy that watering plans be in place for every town project involving trees, and that that would be part of contractual obligation related to the, the installing of the trees. So whether it's the, the people who plant the trees, they have a watering obligation, or the town understands they don't, and the town has agreed to take it over, it's just an item that needs to be discussed and agreed upon. And that was there.
Thank you. Anybody else? If not, first, is there a motion from one of my colleagues? Oh, Mr. Dunn?
Move approval of removal of the trees as requested by the school, High School Building Committee.
There is second?
Second.
By Mr. Hurd. Mr. Dunn, any further comments? Mr. Hurd?
Nope.
Mr. De Corsi?
No.
And Mr. Kuro? Okay, if not on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, roll call, Attorney Heim, please?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahon?
Yes. That's a unanimous vote on agenda item 13. Item 13 is closed. Next, we go to, for approval, Article 50, endorsement of the Community Development Block Grant Application, CDBG. There was a little bit of confusion out there. I got some emails and Facebook messages. I think Don Seltzer was one of them, that at our last Subcommittee Meeting, where Mr. Dunn and I and the other members discussed funding of the CARES Act CV, as well as two other reprogrammed and allocated funds. He was looking for the public hearing, and I explained that this tonight endorsement of CDBG is our initial 1.1 million before the coronavirus and the Federal CARES Act happened on us. And that the meeting that we had just, I don't know, again, was it a year ago? A week or so ago, that that is going through the public process, and we will, it'll be on an agenda in May, before May 15th, which is the deadline. With that, I don't know, Mr. Chaplaine, or, and/or anyone from planning?
So, planning has an ARB meeting tonight, so I'm, I'll be covering this and fortunate to have the Chair and Vice Chair, who also serve in the CDBG Subcommittee. So what we're looking for tonight is the board's endorsement of the CDBG application. And what that, that really has two parts. It's favorable action on the FY21 budget, as well as favorable action on the report to town meeting. And the combination of those two actions fulfills all of our federal requirements, as well as putting forward the budget for next year. So Chair Mahon, you just hit it on the head, but I'll repeat it just for the sake of repeating it. This is the standard process that we go through every year. This year, like last year, we've gone through an enhanced process where we have three residents who serve on a committee, along with Chair Mahon, Vice Chair Dunn, myself, and Jenny Rate, the Director of Planning and Community Development. We go through every single application. We score them all with a metric that's been put together by our CDBG administrator. And then after that scoring, go through a long decision-making process of what will be approved, and then what the funding amounts will be from all of those categories. So that's the process we went through this year, and that's what's before you tonight. There are some other materials attached to this agenda item, just to inform the board about the CARES funding, as well as some of the reallocated funding that was discussed at the last CDBG meeting. But again, like Chair Mahon said, that'll be brought back at a future meeting of the board. I think we're actually aiming, it was actually tonight's materials that needed to be addressed before May 15th. The CARES materials and the reallocation materials will be brought back, most likely, at the board's May 18th meeting. So tonight, I'm happy to answer any questions the board might have. But tonight, what we're looking for is favorable action, again, on the FY21 budget and the draft report to town meeting.
Okay, Mr. Dunn, anything you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I just, I wanted to mention the criteria that we use when we're ranking these. And Adam mentioned it at a high level, and I just think it's worth talking about what the individual criteria are. Their community need, resources and capacity, and how much they encourage partnerships with other organizations, what the cost benefit is, what the, whether or not they leverage funds from other surfaces, sources, excuse me, whether or not they're self-sufficient, and whether they're new, or whether they're, or whether they're like a repetition of an existing program. And so, and we go through, and we grade each one pretty hardly, harshly, and then we like, or I shouldn't say harshly, we grade them fairly, and then at the end of it, we rank them all, and we say, okay, where did they all turn out? And I think some of them turn out really like, kind of a little bit as you'd expect. You're like, yep, I expected that one to score well, and I expected that one to not do so well. But there are also some surprises in there. And I really think that our criteria and our evaluation, I think I mentioned this one, has really gone up, and I think that we maintained that standard this year. And the second comment I got was just that I received an email correspondence saying that the CDBG Subcommittee hadn't considered the Whittmore Park money. And I would actually beg to differ with the, with the author of that email. And it was particularly Um, and, but it was particularly memorable because it was right after the, this board had its public meeting, and one of the people who spoke at the public meeting wanted to speak also at the private subcommittee meeting, and we didn't let her speak because we'd already heard the speech and the public, and the subcommittee meeting is a working group, as opposed to a public hearing. Uh, and so I just wanted to, I guess, assure my colleagues and the public that in fact, we had discussed it at that subcommittee meeting um, in late March. Uh, I think that's all I got. Oh, I, I, I guess, uh, one more, sorry, I but the two, one more thing, which is just to remind the board that this actually has the vote, six voters, because the town manager is also um, an allocator of the CDBG money.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Um, and uh, I'm gonna shortly ask if there's a list of anyone who wants to speak on that. Again, this is something I got an email on, um, but I believe she may possibly be one of the speakers, so I won't take her questions, but I got it, uh, was sent this afternoon, a little bit before four. I really would um, implore people, um, if you're sending anything, you can always email all of us. Um, but for some reason, I didn't check my email one last time at six o'clock. Um, oh no, I checked it right after it came in, that's right. But um, um, just for the uh, sake of record-keeping and um, it really, if everything could get to, at least CC to the select board office. Um, and if that doesn't happen, I think I have close to a hundred percent track record of doing that. Um, but again, um, all the materials that are legally supposed to be considered, uh, what we receive in our packet, um, 48 hours in advance. Uh, but uh, so we'll go from there. Uh, Mr. Chaplaine, is there anyone raising their hands for uh, yes?
Yes, Beth Malofchik has raised her hand.
Okay. Anyone else?
Uh, not, not at this time, no.
Um, again, just name and uh, for the record, Ms. Malofchik?
Beth Malofchik, twenty Russell Street, town meeting member. I did attend both subcommittee meetings when we were still having meetings in public. Uh, that was moderated by, at that time, the CDBG program officer in the planning office. I'm not sure he's there any longer. Um, and then I did attend the meeting, public meeting, again, when we were still having public meetings, um, led by Aaron Swirko, where I shared my thoughts. I, uh, Ms. Mahan does have my detailed letter of late March, which I submitted to Ms. Swirko as we were instructed to do so. And I was very shocked that that was not reflected in the documents um, before you on the novice agenda. Um, so I attended the first uh, or the two uh, subcommittee meetings, and I was surprised that the merits of the Whittmore Park application for the $125,000 of HUD CDBG monies was not discussed in the, before the public. Not, I'm not speaking of the, of the uh, design of the park or anything, but the merits of HUD CDBG monies for this phase two of the application. I attended both meetings. I stayed the entire time. Joanne Preston was with me at the first meeting. Uh, Patricia Warden was with me at the second meeting. Patricia Warden attempted to make comments. They were shut down by uh, one of the committee members. But the merits of the application uh, for phase two of uh, this park redevelopment were not discussed before the public, and that is what I take issue with. In particular, the granite amphitheater steps, uh, which I think in the application are referred to as a retaining wall. Had I had the opportunity at those subcommittee meetings, I would have asked whether the um, Decedibility Commission had uh, reviewed this application, because it um, I don't understand how that could be included, particularly in CDBG money application. Uh, granite amphitheater stairway that's not accessible to all people. So that's my main concern. Um, uh, again, these monies, as, as we're well aware, are for low-income and moderate-income residents. I know we've got Winslow Tower nearby and Chestnut Manor nearby that um, could potentially become less accessible to this park. If we lose that crosswalk, I would hate to see that happen. Um, but that's my main uh, concern, that uh, the merits of the application uh, being worthy of CDBG HUD monies was not discussed, was not given a full vetting before the public. Thank you very much for, for, for um, listening to me.
Thank you, Beth. Uh, Mr. Dunn?
Uh, well, I just want to s- say that, well, I agree that we didn't go into the details of the, of the individual, of the plan, and we don't go into the details of really any of them. Uh, we did score that project, just like we score all the other ones.
Yeah, so there's a matrix, I think was referred to before, that came out of planning this, what, to my memory, six different categories. There are three different um, boxes you could put them in. Um, we all come in and share what we have in the box, and we literally discuss each one of, you know, why people voted it as, you know, highly useful, or neutral, or, or not, you know, not income-producing, all that. So um, we, we definitely did go through that um, over the course of two meetings, so. Um, but um, I understand Ms. Malofchik's concern. Okay, um, Mr. Chaplaine?
I, I also want to add that uh, the granite amphitheater steps that uh, Ms. Malofchik is mentioning are, is not part of phase two. It's part of phase three, for which a funding source has not been requested or pursued yet. Um, so that, uh, that issue she's raising is not germane to the topic before the board tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, but we'll make sure we follow it through when we do get to that phase, and um, I know we'll get answers and make decisions based on those and other answers. Um, first, is there a motion by one of my colleagues to approve Mr. Dunn?
Uh, move approval of the recommendations for the CDBG uh, funding.
There is a second by?
Second.
Mr. De Corsi. Um, Mr. Dunn, any further comments?
Uh, thank you.
Mr. De Corsi?
I did, just want to thank the subcommittee for their work on, on this and bringing it to the board.
You're welcome. Uh, Mr. Kuro?
No further comments, thank you.
And Mr. Hurd?
No comments.
Okay, on a motion by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. De Corsi, uh, roll call Attorney Heim, please?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. That's a five oh.
I'm sorry, wait, Mr. Chaplaine? Sorry, Madam Chair.
I keep forgetting I have a vote, yes.
Okay, uh, six zero unanimous vote on that warrant article hearing. Now, we're going to um, final votes and comments, uh, in the midst of our uh, COVID-19 coronavirus crisis. Uh, we've sort of spoken about this at several meetings. What the board and what the uh, town moderator referred to ear- earlier is that we need to um, at the, need to get the business of the town done. Need to make sure, uh, under the law, even though we have been given some latitude, um, that we get, um, the budgets and things that really need to be addressed. Um, but also bearing in mind, um, trying not to expose, overexpose um, town meeting members, department heads, and anyone else that would attend. So um, I'll let my, as we go through the course of this, what we um, plan on doing is voting on the basically budget um, warrant articles that are before us, that will encapsulate our anticipated June meeting, that's still being discussed, how that, that will be held. And um, the meeting that myself and um, Mr. Chaplaine, Mr. Leone, and Eric Helmut, and Al Tosti were there. Um, the, the town mo- moderator, after discussion from everyone, um, I think Attorney Heim was there, um, that for the remaining warrant articles, um, in order to not take any sort of vote that could possibly subject them to having to wait for a year, or possibly two years to refile. There was a citizen article on zoning. Um, a vote of no action would um, be the proper vote for those remaining articles, so that when we have, what we anticipate will be a special town meeting in the fall. And I don't want to announce a date or anything for that, because we still haven't um, finished with June. A vote by this board of no action is not saying we're not in favor of it. We're just trying to do what we need to do legally. So in whatever months, two, three, four, um, come up, um, those proponents, those citizens, won't have to wait for the annual spring town election. Um, they can be taken up there. And I'm gonna ask Attorney Heim to please correct any misstatements I made, or explain it better than I did.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, there's no uh, mistakes. There, there is an update to um, at least one piece of it. So the basic concept here is that we don't want to uh, prejudice anybody from bringing their warrant articles uh, before a full town meeting, once we feel like we can safely have a full town meeting with the typical type of discourse that we would expect. But whether we have a town meeting on the football field, distanced in ten square foot blocks apart over the PA system, or we have a virtual town meeting, or whatever other option, uh, the essential concept would be to have only the essential financial business go before town meeting, and to take either a no-action vote, or basically another type of vote um, relative to zoning articles, that would make sure that everybody's articles are understood to be basically just being put on hold until the next special town meeting, or non-emergency situation town meeting. Uh, there's a slight uh, update with respect to zoning articles. I won't belabor the point too much. The Mass Moderators Association ended up recommending that zoning articles be referred to a committee, rather than taking no-action votes, so you wouldn't have the complexity of dealing with this assurance that, you know, the planning board won't block things from going to town meeting for two years. Um, with respect to the select board, there's no such uh, issue. Any uh, article before the select board, which has a no-action vote taken on it, whether it's uh, in substance or just in form, it doesn't matter. You can bring that same article back to the select board immediately at the next special town meeting. Um, if the select board's so inclined, uh, the select board could even vote to place all uh, warrant articles before the select board this year on uh, the annual town warrant, on, on, on the next town warrant, uh, as, you know, a gesture to sort of, you know, um, uh, make sure that folks understand that this is basically just so we can have an abbreviated town meeting, where we only address those articles necessary for the financial operations of the town, some of the borrowing that we need to do for capital projects, and um, things like CDBG.
Okay, um, Mr. Chaplaine, did we cover everything before I start to craft what I think will be two separate votes?
Uh, you both covered it very well. The only thing I would add is that uh, so one financial piece was covered tonight with the CDBG vote. Uh, the next meeting will be bringing back the revolving fund votes, as well as the parking benefit district expenditure votes, and then that should encapsulate the financial votes that the board has taken.
Okay, and um, please correct me if I'm wrong, Attorney Heim. First, what we want to do in order to get what I'm calling the budget, the business of the town warrant articles um, into this June meeting, um, I believe I would get a move approval on Articles seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-seven, seventy-eight, seventy-nine, eighty, eighty-one, eighty-two, and eighty-three. Is that correct?
Uh, you'd be voting no action on all those articles, yes.
Okay. Um, all right, so now that I've totally confused the process and done it backwards, um, uh, and you might, first, my, one of my colleagues wants to make a motion of no action of what, all the articles I just mentioned?
So moved.
Is there a second to Mr. Dunn's?
I can't.
Was that Mr. Hurd, I believe? Um, uh, Mr. Dunn, any further comments?
Uh, you know, this is one of those things where there's so many comments, but uh, nothing germane.
Um, a second by Mr. Hurd. Mr. Hurd, any comments?
Yeah, I just want to say we don't take this vote lightly. You know, a lot of people put a lot of time and effort into these warrant articles, and we look forward to having a little more time to discuss them up until the next fall to uh, to uh, you know, get the ins and outs of these articles, so.
Uh, Mr. De Corsi?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question for Attorney Heim. On a- any articles that we had voted previously, this, this vote, while it may be the same of, as some of the earlier votes, we're not gonna have any comments on any of the warrant articles. It's just basically, it's no action, basically without prejudice, to put it back on the warrant for the next uh, special or annual town meeting?
I would go a step further, Mr. De Corsi. I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I?
Attorney Heim?
Um, I would go a step further, Mr. De Corsi. You are taking a no-action vote, even on those articles which you had previously approved. You're essentially saying that the only business, that you're not gonna make any subjective determinations about which articles we think, you know, we might want to go forward, which articles we favored, which articles we didn't. You're basically saying that unless it's a finance article, we are voting no action, so we can have an abbreviated town meeting, um, and we're retroactively voting no action, even on those articles that we had supported, so that town meeting will really, hopefully, be uh, one or two uh, basically consent agenda style votes of budget, capital expenditures, something of that nature.
Okay, tha- thank you, Attorney Heim, and thank you also for, it sounds like you're working with the moderator on that zoning issue, and that was um, eh, good that that could be worked out, because it, I know Chapter forty-eight made it a little tricky in terms of procedure, so um, well done on that.
Um, Mr. Hurd?
Nothing further.
Okay, and I just want to, in case anybody at home is watching this one, we talk about the no-action vote on the warrant articles. Contained within those wa- warrant articles are six resolutions um, that are coming before us as warrant articles. Those are also included. Um, and there's no action to be taken up um, further down the road. And I do want to note that um, the town moderator did have communication with all of the ten registered voters, uh, warrant articles, including the resolution, um, explaining the process, if they have any questions. And I, I believe I saw one or two people um, not objecting, just wanted for the clarification. So um, we've um, I believe we've done everything to make everything aware. Um, am I correct with the, on that? Um, Mr. Chaplaine, Attorney Heim, so.
Yeah, I, I want to just thank the moderator for um, crafting something and getting it out to town meeting members, and specifically article proponents, is basically asking for their cooperation. We're all sort of in this together, and whatever form of town meeting we're gonna end up having is gonna be really, really challenging to execute. And so um, he put out that notice to all town meeting members, as, uh, current town meeting members, as well as uh, to article proponents, to just explain, this is what we're doing, and this is why.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Um, so on a motion of no action uh, by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hurd, any further comments? If not, roll call vote Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Kuro?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. We don't get the town manager on this one, right? That's five oh, sorry, have a little fun with. Um, now we go to correspondence received. We have a piece of, uh, correspondence from Brian Rustacia, Rustacia? I always say his name wrong. Um, request temporary amendment to traffic rules and orders, mandatory sidewalk uses. Their motion to move receipt by?
Oh, moved.
Mr. Kuro's are second by?
Second.
Mr. Dunn? Um, uh, Mr. Chaplaine, our town manager?
Well, I, I just want to let uh, both Brian and the board know, uh, we are actively working on this request. Um, I had a Zoom call this morning with Mike Ratammacher, Dan Amstutz from the Planning Department, uh, and Chief Flaherty, um, as well as Jenny Ray from the Planning Department, to talk about this request. Uh, we're looking at uh, potential for both lane reduction and sidewalk, temporary sidewalk expansion and mass av, as well as the closure or closure slash, slash, shared street designation on neighborhood roads uh, throughout town, as a number of other communities across the country are doing. So uh, we're trying to figure out what the safest, most, uh, or safest and least resource intent, uh, intensive approach will be. Um, we're also trying to figure out what the right way to get public feedback is on this before we implement it, but doing so in a quick and efficient fashion. So uh, hopefully, very soon, we'll have more to come on this. Uh, we think it's a good idea. We think it's gonna be necessary as the weather gets warmer, uh, and we still have social distancing restrictions in place, so uh, we're actively working on. So we're actively working on this, and I hope to bring back more to the board very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Chapdelaine. So motion by Mr. Carroll. Mr. Carroll, any further comments?
No, no further comments.
Seconded by Mr. Dunn. Mr. Dunn?
Thank you, also.
Mr. De Corsi?
No comments.
Mr. Hurd?
No comments.
Okay, on a motion to move receipt, with the information provided by our town manager, but motion by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Dunn. Attorney Heim, roll call, please.
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. Five zero vote. We now go to new business, starting from my virtual left. Attorney Heim?
The only piece of new business that I'd like to raise is, in addition to thanking all the folks who are working so hard, whether they're folks who are members of our town staff, or they're volunteers and residents who are trying to communicate with all of us, is that in order to set our polling, I believe we may need to get out a notice before May, honored before May 15th. So as we work to finalize those polling locations through the board office, maybe necessary to convene the board outside of its regularly scheduled meeting. I just wanted to make the board aware of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Heim. Mr. Chapdelaine?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few brief updates on the town's COVID-19 response. We continue to meet daily via Zoom with the leadership team on both our response locally, as well as our understanding of what's happening regionally. Today, there was an update where we are, we've put in place today a face coverings advisory. We're strongly advising those who leave the home to wear a face covering to protect themselves and others. We also are expecting that next week, the Board of Health will take a vote using its statutory authority to make that a mandatory face covering policy. We're seeing a number of our neighboring communities do that. And from a public health perspective, our public health, local public health experts think it's a reasonable measure to put in place. Though some may think it is extreme or a bridge too far, we do believe it is in the best interest for these next couple of weeks or more to keep everybody as safe as possible and break the transmission of the virus. I also want to mention, there's much, much increased conversation at the regional level and at the state level about safe reopening at some point, which will likely be a phased reopening. I feel very lucky that I've been asked to chair an advisory group of other town managers and mayors to the governor and lieutenant governor, which will be discussing, meeting internally for the first time tomorrow, and then hopefully talking with the administration soon. And I'm also part of a working group with another group of mayors, looking at a set of guiding principles that we'd like to adopt regionally, in terms of reopening, that we can hopefully get on the same page with the state so that we're all doing this in lockstep, and that we don't have border wars in terms of what's open and what's not open. So I think there will be a lot to come in terms of data over the next few weeks, as well as news and potential strategies for how we look at a phased reopening over the course of the next, next several months. So stay tuned for that, but there is more to come. And then the final thing I'll say is, we have, back by popular demand on Thursday at 2:00 PM, another virtual town forum in terms of the town's public health and public safety response. We had about 140 people participate last week, ran out of time in the hour we had allocated. So we've now allocated an hour and a half to do another virtual town forum to try to get to as many questions as possible from town residents. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. De Corsi?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of things. First of all, I did see the town forum that the town manager ran last week. And I want to thank the town manager, Director of Health and Human Services, Christine Bonjono, Chief Flaherty, and Chief Kelly. Very informative hour, and that's still available. But just the things that's between the Health Department, Police and Fire have to do to adjust and provide services safely is remarkable. So I want to thank them for that. And I also want to recognize, we had a discussion early tonight about how important voting by mail is going to be and how we're encouraging it. And there's a group in town that, one thing that has remained the same throughout this crisis is we get mail every day. And the postal workers in town, I want to thank for their service. They're, they're unheralded, but they're, they're out there every single day. And they're going to be a big part in this town in terms of both getting out applications and making sure they get back to town hall. So, so thank them for their efforts. And for everybody, we still have a ways to go here, and let's keep working together by staying apart. This, this is very real. It's affecting a lot of people. But let's work together, check in on your neighbors, check in on your relatives. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Dunn?
I don't have anything except for sharing my heartfelt thanks to all the people who are working so hard to keep us safe.
Thank you, Mr. Hurd?
Just again, want to thank all the town staff, all of our medical professionals in town. And again, as the weather night gets nicer, there's a lot more temptation to relax on some of the social distancing mechanisms that the town's put in place. And just to remind people that, you know, this is really the peak. And this is a time that we can make the right decisions and the wrong decisions. So to contain, to make the right decisions so we can get to a phased opening, as the town manager mentioned. And then on a personal note, I'd like to thank our delegation at the State House, Senator Friedman, Rep. Robert Rogers, and Rep. Garbly, particularly Rep. Garbly, because I've texted him every day for about a month about virtual notarizations. The governor signed that today to allow real estate closings to happen via Zoom or other electronic means, which is a big step in helping to stop the spread of the virus because of the thousands of closings that are happening in Massachusetts today. So again, on a personal note, I'd like to thank our delegation for supporting the legislation.
Thank you. Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was also going to note the Public Health Forum. I was also able to tune into it. And it demonstrated what I think we've known for many years, that part of what makes us so strong as a town is that our public safety and our public health officials work so closely together. And there is really kind of an unbroken bond. And I think seeing them in that forum, you could see the level of really strong and close cooperation between all of them. You know, and it's worth noting that both our police and fire chiefs, although they've been in public safety for a long time, are, you know, tried and true veterans, they're, they're both new at the tops of their departments. And they're, they're taking on this, this big challenge and really rising to it. So thank you again. I'm glad there's going to be another one of those. The only other thing I would like to just share, I think we all felt great sadness to hear of the passing of John Flood. I think many people who tune in and watch our meetings have undoubtedly gone to forums up at the senior center where John has worked for the last number of years. He's kind of the caretaker, and he was a longtime facilities professional here, working for the town. But he was also a select, a select tone, and he, at every Veterans event, Patriots say John was the guy singing the National Anthem or singing God Bless America, such a beautiful voice. So I know that he's up there somewhere, singing with our late colleague, Kevin Greeley. He, he did well. He raised a family that also in turn provides a lot of service to the town. So I just want to share my sadness and, and thank you, John, wherever you are. We know where you are.
All right. Is that it? I'm sorry, Mr. Carroll. Is that it? Yes, okay. Don't want to leave everything on a sad note. Also condolences to our representative Sean Garbly on the passing of his dad, Jim. He's a great man, as well as there are the Arlington residents that unfortunately we've lost, some COVID-19 related, some not. And those are people, family members, loved ones. So concerning my remarks, the manager and others sort of touched on it, but I can't stress to people in Arlington, residents, small businesses that are really coming together in ways that I kind of expected, but not to the degree and to the dedication and the outreach in terms of trying to serve people during this crisis. All of us are here, are members of the select board, available to you. But I cannot stress enough, if you can go to the town website, www. Arlington MA.gov, you can check there every day, Monday through Friday, usually around a little after 5:00 for the coronavirus updates from our town manager, from our Health and Human Services Director. There's also links there where you can get town notices, email alerts, submit a question, as well as information all of us provide individually. I did speak to, again, I need to really stress to people that, you know, there's a process concerning our select board agendas, you know, please follow that process starting with the select board office. To that end, I did receive on Wednesday morning, an email from one of our town residents, Elizabeth Dre. I called her back the day after, spent a little over an hour on the phone. She had requests, wanted me to put on two agenda items on the select board agenda. And I explained the process for that. It turns out, one of her requests, we were already discussing with the election update. The second request, which I said I would not avail myself the opportunity of, but I would pass on to my colleagues. Elizabeth had envisioned that the virtual town forums would feature an individual member of the select board. And that meeting would be covered by ACMI, and residents could call in. And she referenced it in lieu of the fact that she and any other resident could no longer call a member of the select board and have coffee with them. She's trying to replicate that. So I told her I would indicate that to my colleagues. I did say I didn't feel that was the purpose of the virtual town hall forums. Me replicating, meeting her for a cup of coffee, was sitting in front of Lexington High School for over an hour, returning that phone call. So I just wanted to make my colleagues aware of that. And there are other ways. I was thinking when I was talking to anyone for more than an hour before the coronavirus pandemic, I would get one to three letters, snail mail, as they call it, largely from seniors or low-income families who, you know, don't have access to internet and do research on that, sometimes make calls and connect them with the appropriate people, as do my colleagues. And now we're all getting that just about daily. Probably a day goes by that something doesn't come in. So yes, there's technology. We need to avail ourselves of that and be there. But we also have to make sure we're reaching everyone. And then the last thing I'd like to leave with the town manager. I've gotten this quite a few times from residents who have asked me, where can I donate money? You know, my spouse and I, my partner and I fortunately still can work and would really like to donate money to especially people who are renting or people who need help paying their bills. I have been referring them to not so much the fuel assistance program because I know that that's pretty well-funded, and the need on that is waxing and waning. The Council on Aging, the AYCC, as well as referred them to the Arlington-Cambridge-Summerville ARCs chapter of RIM, which is the Refugee Interfaith Ministry, which one of the people actually used to serve on it when she lived in Summerville. So she was going to get reinvigorated to that. But what I would say to the manager is, they were asking, is there any way we can donate money to people needing help to pay the rent, make the bills? I know we're putting aside proposing CDBG CARES Act money, and I assume we can't commingle public funds. We can't direct them to that. But I just wanted to put out there that I've gotten that request quite a lot. And I always refer them to the town website. I don't know if you want to say anything about that tonight or maybe at a future meeting, sort of think about it and talk to the leadership team.
So the Arlington COVID-19 Relief Fund should be launched in the next two days to fulfill the exact purpose you just described. We're just putting the finishing touches on the website where people would be able to donate online. And the key focus would be on people who are struggling to make their monthly payments, as well as potentially a portion also being able to help small businesses that are struggling. So yes, that exact fund that you're describing should be launched very shortly.
Right, and I'm pretty sure we're going to have our restaurant bingo card launch coming up soon also. Some people have asked for that. So with that, the next meeting is, next scheduled, regularly scheduled meeting is next week, May 4th, 2020. With that, I'll take a motion to adjourn by?
So moved.
Mr. Carroll, seconded by? Mr. Hurd, non-debatable, on a motion by, to adjourn by Mr. Carroll, seconded by Mr. Hurd, Attorney Heim?
Mr. De Corsi?
Yes.
Mr. Hurd?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Mahan?
Yes. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.